Mayor Pro-Ten Brightigam.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here.
And Councilmember O'Neil is absent.
May I ask Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe to lead us in the invocation, followed by Councilmember Klaffenstein for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure, thank you. I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we meet tonight to make decisions for our community, may we use only our best skills and judgment as we consider each matter before us. May we always act in accordance with what is best for our city and our fellow citizens. Amen. You can just hand over your heart. Pete, after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, we will recess to the Housing Authority. So I'll hand it over to Chair Brightigam.
It's automatic. All right. So we will call the meeting of the Housing Authority to order. Oral communications, is there anybody here that would like to address the Housing Authority?
Commissioner Brightigam.
I'm sorry. But we should do roll call first, right?
Commissioner Dovin.
President.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Klaffenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Tran.
Here.
Vice Chair Kim Nguyen.
Here.
And Chair Brightigam.
Here.
And we have Commissioners Beckel, Mr. Tan Nguyen, and Commissioner O'Neil, absent.
Thank you. Okay. Now we'll do oral communications. Is there anybody here that would like to address the Garden Grove Housing Authority? Seeing none, we will close oral communications and move to consent.
I'll move it.
We have a motion, we have a second. We call for the vote.
Commissioner Dovin.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Klaffenstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Tran.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
And Chair Brightigam. Motion received, five yes votes.
Fund of matters, any matters? Seeing none, we will go to adjournment. We will adjourn the next meeting to September 26th here at the CMC.
All righty, thank you. Back to City Council, we'll go to Presentations, Item 1A.
This evening, we have upcoming release of the city's new mobile app as presented by the Information Technology Department, and Director Anin Rao is here to provide that presentation.
Thank you, Liz. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, tonight, the IT Department would like to give you a preview of the new city mobile app. The current app is functional, but the technology and look and feel are a bit dated. The current app is provided by a third-party vendor, one that is not very responsive to requests for updates or enhancements. A bigger concern is that the current app does not offer much in the way of technical integration, though there is some level of duplicate data entry to keep the website and the app in sync. The new proposed app eliminates all these issues and brings some new features. I would like to thank both Cedric Gallo and Mumorogron for all their work on this project, and they are here to provide a demo. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Very happy to be here tonight to do a preview of the new mobile app. The app aims to be an enhanced experience. These are some of the key features of the app that I will be highlighting today, the first one being emergencies or notifications in case of emergencies. When a notification is sent, it would be received by the operating system, and it will be displayed by the notification center, as we can see on the left. If the user decides to interact with the notification, it would be launched in the app, as we can see in the center screenshot, with an option to read more. Lastly, if the user decides to see a history of past notifications, they can do so in the new notifications history section. If we launch the app, the first thing we're going to see in the home, in the homepage, is the ability to swipe through the news articles, which happen to be the most important or the most viewed item on the city's website. Focusing on the top navigation, we can see a phone icon to call City Hall, we see the notifications that I just previously mentioned, along with the hamburger menu for additional options, and the search engine that is powered also by the city's website. The bottom navigation is where we can find all of the app's features, which I will cover one by one. Under Open Gov, we can learn about city officials, visit district portals, and find important information to both departments and Director Bios. Our Services section features the most used services at the top, and it's followed by an index that is both searchable and curated by our staff. Report an issue everyone is aware of, and is prominently displayed at the center of the navigation, which is a feature that allows users to submit non-emergency matters to the city. My Garden Grove is a new concept, which works by providing an address, and in return, it would give you location-based information such as district, city representative, and services scheduling information, along with nearby parks. News section hosts not only news articles but also events and Garden Grove TV3 videos. A quick summary on the technical side, of course, it's a completely new interface. It reduces data redundancy and delays by using one source of information, which is the city's website. It is responsive and accessible to meet both conscious requirements and ensures that all elements are compliant. We have an estimated launch date of mid-September, so we invite you to please stay, visit our city website and stay informed, because we will need you to download it and give us your feedback and participate. Okay, that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions? Come on, Joe.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. First, who's writing our news articles and who's maintaining it, and if I want to have an input on it, who do I talk to?
That would be the Office of Community Relations, led by Anna Polito, RCI, RPIO.
Okay. How closely does the app mimic our present website?
So the news feed is the same as you would see on the city website at the moment.
What about the rest of the website? The City Council, the Bios, everything's there?
That is correct.
I want to see on it the city events and agenda like we do have on our website. Are we going to post city events or events in and around the city?
Yes, sir. That is available as part of the news section of the website, and the City Council meeting information is available in the Open Gov section of the website, of the, of the app, I'm sorry.
Including our meeting agendas and our videos that we, so when they use the app, they're pretty much going to be able to access the same that they, we have on our website, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, Kim? Go ahead.
Just one quick question. The emergency alerts that are going to be, I guess, be pushed out to folks that have downloaded the app, will that also include like power outages and street closures, that type of thing, or just sit here with them?
Yes. So I did have a conversation with Anna Polito on this, and she wants to keep it strictly to emergency notifications and also to any city closures or service, any interruptions in service.
Is power outages considered emergency, or no?
Those are Southern California Edison, so we don't have control over that. And Edison does have their own notification process.
Okay, thank you.
First, everyone, please check your mic and make sure it's not on, because we all hear an echo up here for whoever has it on that's not using it. If you have, your mic is on and you're not talking, there's an echo.
Mine is, but...
You have to turn it off if you're not using it, because we all hear an echo. Sorry. Stephanie and I were going crazy over it. But I just want to say, thank you so much to the IT Department. I know that I met with you guys several years ago now, one, to complain about the website, and I didn't even want to start on the app, and then after some digging, you guys looked at it and you realized how pretty unusable that app was, and you took it upon yourselves to change that, and on and you stayed true to your promise. It took some time, but you did it, and I'm really excited to see it come to fruition. Just thank you guys for all your care and attention to that, as well as all the work that you've done on the website, because I know you guys did significant changes on that as well, so it does not go unnoticed. It's going to be something that our residents will be able to use easier, and I look forward to potential videos coming from GGTV that will kind of instruct people how to use, especially the report an issue. I know that when I did a video on that, it was like my most viewed video, so I'm excited for this to be something that our residents can rely on rather than asking us to do it for them.
Speaking of that video, that's why we're releasing it around September 18th, with the video that's coming out from GG3 at the same time.
Just a comment to say thank you very much. This is obviously an important tool for the community, and I think obviously pushing this out to make sure more and more people are aware of the app, how user-friendly it will be, and obviously what a great tool it will be for them will be important, but thank you for all of your hard work on this. It's going to be great.
All righty, thank you guys very much. Appreciate it. Looking forward to seeing the new release. All right, we're going to go out of order for one second. I would like to pull forward Item 4B from Consent Calendar, which is Adoption of a Proclamation Declaring September as Hunger Action Month in Garden Grove. So, yeah, I'll bring it forward and I'll move it. We have a motion, second, roll call vote, or vote, please.
Who is the second? Motion received, six yes votes.
All right. Can we ask Matthew Hurley to come forward, please? And then may I ask Maria Stipe to read from the proclamation?
Sure, I'd be happy to. This is a proclamation declaring... The proclamation declaring September as Hunger Action Month in Garden Grove. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in California, where 10 and a half percent of Californians face food insecurity on a daily basis, and one in every seven California children do not know where their next meal will come from. And whereas everyone needs nutritious food to thrive, and people are working hard to provide for themselves and their families, yet over 267,000 individuals, including over 64,000 children here in Orange County, are food insecure. And whereas the city of Garden Grove is committed to working with Abound Food Care, Orange County Food Bank, and Second Harvest Food Bank collectively, known as the Orange County Hunger Alliance, by raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas in the first half of 2023, Orange County Food Bank and Second Harvest Food Bank have collectively distributed 33 million pounds of food through its partner network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, senior centers, schools, colleges, universities, and other community organizations. And whereas in the first half of 2023, Abound Food, I just moved my thing here, I'm so sorry. In the first half of 2023, Orange County Food Bank and Second Harvest Food Bank have collectively distributed 33 million pounds of food through their partner networks. In the first half of 2023, Abound Food Care has recovered 307,430 pounds of food, reducing food waste and diverting that food to those who need it. And whereas in the month of September, it has been designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to enlist the public in the movement to end hunger by taking action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations to ensure every community and everybody in it has the food they need to thrive. And whereas food banks and other organizations across the country, including the members of the Orange County Hunger Alliance, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help end food security in our local community. Now therefore, we, the City of Garden Grove City Council, do hereby recognize September 2023 as Hunger Action Month in Garden Grove, and call this observance to the attention of our citizens. Thank you. And Matthew, now you're welcome to provide any comments you may have.
Happy to be here. Thank you. If possible, I'd like to get a picture, but I'm sure you're...
Let's do that. Usually it's Mark here, I know. Right. Oh, don't talk like that.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the Garden Grove City Council. I'm very grateful to be here and very grateful that you are acknowledging and commemorating this September as Hunger Action Month. A lot of our details and the need for this are spelled out in the proclamation itself, and so I just wanted to highlight the Orange County Hunger Alliance. I'm with Orange County Food Bank. A lot of you are familiar with my boss, Director of the Food Bank, Mark Lowry, Mike Liarcos of Abound Food Care, and Malia Carey and Claudia at Second Harvest in Irvine. Together, our organizations are the Orange County Hunger Alliance, and we serve the entirety of Orange County, often doubling up and working with multiple community agencies and partners in your cities, in your districts, and serving a lot of the same people. Now, that's the good news and the bad news. The redundancy in who we serve also speaks to the need. You heard the numbers, and I do have to express to you, they are elevated. They remain elevated. We are bringing in a lot of food, and we are handing out a lot of food. It's the good news, and that's the bad news. The Orange County Hunger Alliance is committed to not only helping people but to advocating for solutions to poverty amelioration and food security for all of Orange County, and we are very grateful to the work that you all have done as part of the Garden Grove City Council in that regard. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you guys for all that you do.
We try.
All right, that takes us back to oral communications. We'll open up oral communications now. And I do have a couple cards. Fred Smoller from Orange County Sanitation District.
I'm Fred Smoller, I'm Professor of Political Science at Chapman University in Orange. Thank you for letting me speak to you, and may I just first congratulate you on the hiring of Ms. Kim as a city manager. I, that's probably one of the best decisions you've ever made, not that I would know. In any case, I'm here to tell you about the Orange County Sustainability Decathlon. Some of you of a certain age, my age, might remember in 2013, 2015, the city of Irvine hosted the Department of Energy Solar Decathlon with the houses that came from around the world. Well, I kind of brought that here in 2013, 2015. It then went off to Colorado, and I was with it in Shanghai in China. We all know where the state is going on climate change, and we see evidence of climate change all over Orange County with erosion on our seawalls, wildfires, droughts, just even the recent hurricane. I was able to get a $5 million grant, we're the only county in this state to get this grant. I got it as a private citizen, not through Chapman, to put on the Orange County Sustainability Decathlon, which will be held October 5th through the 15th at the OC Fair and Events Center. What we will have are 15 homes, primarily from California but also China and around the world, and they will be built on the college campuses, they're being built now, and they exemplify sustainable principles, and they will be brought and demonstrated for honor, for public awards and public tours. But why I'm here today is that we have, in our competition, a huge K through 12 component. There is this belief by many that climate change, a key to addressing climate change is through education. And so we want to build into all of our classes in the K through 12, as well as at the university level, some type of sustainability component. So we will have an education day, we will also have as part of our event, an effort to incentivize the private sector. The overall goal for the county is to make Orange County the sustainability capital of the world. That's, my wife laughs when I say that. It's a big lift, it'll take place over several years, probably decades. My point is that when I got the $5 million from the state, I immediately said, gee, we need to do this every two years, 2025, 27, and so forth. And what the state quite rightly said to me is, well, we'll give you your $5 million, but first, we need to see local government buy-in. How many of your people will come? So, I know I'm out of time. What I'm asking you to do is, I sent over a PDF, I would very much like you to help me publicize this event, drive attendance to the event, send it out if you could, as other cities are doing in their quarterly newsletter or however you communicate with citizens. The other part's more expensive. Cities such as Irvine, Costa Maste, I'm sorry, I have to stop, Anaheim and others are contributing funds to the K through 12 program, and I'm here to ask you for, well, $22,000, not for me, but to pay for something called the Child Creativity Lab. You would of course be recognized, your logo would be on our website, you would have space at the event, and a number of other things I can discuss with you. This is a good investment, because someday you're going to apply for a grant for a lot more money, and you're going to be able to say, well, you know, to the federal government of the state, this is what we've done in sustainability. In addition, all the other great things you're doing, you can say, gee, we were proud participants, along with 20 other cities in the Orange County Sustainability Decathlon. Now, I know not to take advantage of the time limit, but I left you my card, you can look up ocsd23.com, I've spoken to your school board, we have 1,800 citizen, students coming, just students, and we think this is a very good long-term investment in our efforts to defeat climate change. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smoller.
Sorry for going over.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Sorry. I'm City Manager Kim and City Staff. My name, oh.
He's good.
Oh, not your turn. Thank you. Sorry, guys. My name's Ruby Garcia, and I'm the CEO and founder of the Andy and Aiden Safety Group here. To invite you all to our special needs event coming up, Communities Come Together of Garden Grove on September 13th from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Community Meeting Center at 113, 11300 Sanford Avenue here in Garden Grove. So here at the events, we partner with Garden Grove Police Department, and we show special needs families how to cross the street, call 911. We've added a new station called Personal Safety, which shows you what to do when you're lost. We plan on expanding those series, because personal safety is very broad. And so we provide stamp cards, so families and children can, you know, obtain reinforcers at the end, and we plan on having lots of great resources for the families as well. Last year, you know, our event was really well-received amongst the community, asking for more, and they did mention that their kiddos want to be more independent in the community, so this is definitely a good start for them. So if you guys would like to attend, all the families watching us at home, you can call me at 714-856-4914, or RSVP on the QR code on the flyer. We want to make sure that we have enough supplies for this event, so we're requesting RSVP. And this flyer is also located on the Garden Grove City page under Events, under September 13, and you can click on that date, and it'll take you straight to that flyer, to the, straight to the QR code as well. Sorry, my other son had to run. Okay, read your, read your paper.
Videos of September 13th. From 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Say, "Thank you." Thank you.
So, "Thank you."
Thank you.
Uh, uh.
Thank you, guys.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, City Council and staff. I'm here for two reasons, well, actually three, because I totally support Ruby's initiatives and her dedication to the community. I think it's amazing, and I think the Garden Grove PD has really embraced her cause and supported her, and I really appreciate that. So the other two reasons here is I'm here to invite the community to the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association's annual meeting and our backyard brunch. This will be Garden Grove's, GGNA's 20th anniversary, which is really hard to believe. The GGNA works to bring the residents and members into the city-making process to bridge the gap between City Hall, police, Public Works, and other departments. The annual meeting is a tradition of hearing from influential guests, a delicious lunch, music, and raffles. We also award a community spotlight for an outstanding volunteer in our community. The event will take place September 9th at 11 o'clock in the morning at 12381 Mead Street. This event is free, but donations are always accepted and appreciated. You can check out the details on the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association's Facebook page, or email me at m-a-u-r-e-e-n dot g-g-n-a at gmail dot com. Reservations are very much appreciated. Also, the Parks and Recs Fall Guide is out, and pickleball is starting again. Please consider learning the games, the learning the game or advancing your own game. Pickleball Performance LLC are the coaching staff, and they're amazing. It's so fun, so please help us grow this sport in Garden Grove, have some, and have some fun along the way. See you on the court.
Come on up, Nick. Your last but not least.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, my name's Nicholas Dibbs, teacher, longtime resident of Garden Grove. I'm here concerning the safety of our students in the school district, as it, and also this falls under Item 4E on your consent calendar regarding the grand jury's report and the feedback from the city. and the feedback from the city. The grand jury report highlights in Item 11 that all Orange County school districts should develop a plan to implement or enhance mental health, et cetera. So this is a topic I've tried to bring awareness to, the city and the school district must do a better job of working together on this issue. I would ask that you pull this item, because there's some additional items that should go in there for the city's response. I would like to read a statement from the Ringgold School District. Recent national, and this came out last year, recent national statistics show that approximately 20% of cyberbullying incidents occur over cellphones during the school day, as do the orchestration of fights. As many of you know, the Ringgold School District was not exempt from these kind of occurrences last year. Ringgold Police Department documented 56 criminal incidents in the last school year where students used cellphone communication with fellow students to plan fights, harass other students, coordinate vaping gatherings in school bathrooms, vandalize property, and commit other criminal mischief. In an effort to curb this trend, a new electronic device policy has been enacted for the school year. So they have banned the cellphones, and that's what I have asked the school district to do, is to ban the use of cellphones in compliance with AB 272. And AB 272 provides the research from the State Assembly on this issue, and the importance of banning cellphones and smartphones during school time, and they leave it up to each district to, to implement that policy as they see best. So I submitted a request to the county, to the school district, back, I believe, more than once, the last one being in July, and the response came back that they surveyed students and parents and staff. On, on, on public safety and health issues and protecting the children, you don't do a survey. You don't do a survey saying, should we ban alcohol or drug abuse, or, or other harmful things at school. You don't need a survey to, to do this. This is already documented by the U.S. Surgeon General's report, it's also documented on many resources on my website, dibsdigitalwellness.org, dibsdigitalwellness.org, that's spelled D-I-B-S, dibsdigitalwellness.org. The, the research is there, the research by the State Assembly for AB 272 is clear. The Biden-Harris Administration, on the 17th of August, launched a new public awareness campaign to highlight federal school safety resources and evidence-based practices available through schoolsafety.gov. Mayor, I'd like just a moment of extra time here, and that's, and you can, and it provides a link for funding opportunities and grants, so the city and the school district should be working together, collaborating on with the schoolsafety.gov, and to help bring awareness to this. So I ask you to please pull 4E, so you can include some of these extra things in there, and you have now a copy for each of you with the resources. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last card I have, anyone else wishing to speak during oral communications? Okay, seeing none, we will close oral communications, and go to written communications, we do have two, so Item 3A.
Item 3A is consideration of a written request from the Giac on Buddhist monastery to host a two-day Buddhist birthday festival at Garden Grove Park, and Mr. Montanes and Janet Pelai are here to provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Staff has received a written request from the Giac on Buddhist monastery to host a two-day Buddhist birthday festival at Garden Grove Park on Saturday, May 4th, and Sunday, May 5th, 2024. In January 2020, the City Council approved the organization's request to conduct a two-day festival at this park site, however, due to the pandemic, the event was canceled. The organization celebrates Buddha's birthday with a community-wide festival that includes entertainment on stage, ceremonies, and food. It is anticipated, anticipated that there will be about 3,000 people attending this event throughout each of the days. Approval of this event request will not have a financial impact on the city's general fund. The organization would be required to reimburse the city for all of the direct costs incurred to support the two-day event. At this time, that total amount to be reimbursed has not been determined. If this event request is approved, staff will prepare a letter agreement between the city and the monastery that will include provisions related to the reimbursement of city support and all direct costs, reimbursement for lost revenue as a result of festival activities, an outline of allowable festival activities, a parking plan, and insurance requirements. It is recommended that the City Council consider this request, and if the request is approved, authorize the city manager or her designee to prepare and sign an agreement on behalf of the city for use of Garden Grove Park to conduct the two-day Buddha's Birthday Festival. That concludes staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Janet. Any questions, comments, or, go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I wanna greet my two very good friends, Dr. Huen Tengley and Nguyen Hui. Before you come up, I have the honor and privilege to emcee one of your events, it's called Vissak, or Buddha's Birthday, one of two major religious celebrations from the Buddhist faith, equivalent of Christmas and Easter, which we just celebrate, Vulan. So thank you, thank you very much for coming to our city. We welcome you with open arms, and we hope you make it a tradition to stay in Garden Grove every year, with Vissak and Vulan, and so on. So welcome, Dr. Huen. Hopefully, our council will support your event, and I would like our community director, John Montanes, to draft the agreement and support them with as much city services as we can, and I'm not worried about any reimbursement, because I know your events are very well-attended and very well-organized, so thank you for coming to our city.
Good evening, the mayor and City Council, and City Manager, and all City of Garden Grove officer. Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Dr. Lee Nguyen, and on behalf of Vietnamese-American United Buddhist Congregation, a congregation in the United States of more than 300 Buddhist temple, especially in Southern California. And we on behalf of Vietnamese Buddhist community of Southern California. And I'm here for two reasons. Number one reason, as the customer Doven already said, that we're going to say thank you in 2020, you guys already approved us to do the Buddha Birthday, but because of the event of COVID-19 spread, and we didn't do it. And we discontinued for three years, and now we come back. And the second reason, we would like to ask your permit to do the celebration of Buddha Birthday in May 4th and May 5th of 2024, next year. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments?
I'll move it.
All righty. We have a motion and a second, a call to vote.
Thank you.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you. Your request has been approved. Thank you. All right, Item 3B.
Item 3B is consideration of a written request from LFA to extend operating hours and make an exemption to the city's noise ordinance on New Year's Eve, 2023, and Ms. Pelai is here to provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. I'll be doing the report for this request. The community service is here tonight to transmit a written request on behalf of LFA, the operator of the Garden Amp, requesting approval to extend the operating hours and make an exemption to the noise ordinance municipal code section 8.47.040, to operate amplified music from 10:00 PM to 12:15 AM on December 31st, 2023. In 2017, the city entered into a 10-year facility use agreement with LFA as the production company of the city's festival amphitheater. The agreement allows LFA to operate amplified music until 10:00 PM. Staff received a request from LFA to host a New Year's Eve event at the Garden Amp on December 31st, 2023, that would extend the operating hours from 10:00 PM to 12:15 AM. Additionally, this request would require the approval to make an exemption per Garden Grove Municipal Code 8.47.070, to hours listed in the noise ordinance establishing lower noise thresholds after 10:00 PM. Approval of this request will not have a financial impact to the city. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, John. Any questions?
I'll move it.
I'll second it, but I do have a quick question. We're, we're talking specifically one night, one-time thing, for this coming New Year's, right? To extend it, so this won't be going on?
Yeah, not, not ongoing, just for the New Year's Eve.
And if they wanted to do it the following year, they'd come back.
They'd have to come back, yes.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please call the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
All righty, thank you, guys, that concludes. Written communications, we'll go to other legislative bodies. Can we go to sanitation district? President O'Neill is absent, so I'll hand it over to Vice President Cindy Tran.
I would like to call a sanitary district meeting to order. Madam Secretary, will you take role?
Member Brightigam.
Here.
Member Doven.
Here.
Member Clumpenstein.
Here.
Member Nguyen.
Here.
Member Jones.
Here.
And Vice President Tran.
Here.
And President O'Neill is absent.
Oral communication will held simultaneously with the City Council. There are three items on consent. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion? Can we move them all together?
Okay. Thank you. We have Item 3A under consideration.
Hold on, we gotta call the vote on that.
Okay, sorry.
Consent.
Okay, call the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
We have Item 3A under consideration. Will the clerk read the title?
Yes, Item 3A is a ward of contract to JIG Consultants for Professional Engineering Design Services for the Acacia and Taft Sewer Main Replacement Project, CP NP 1387,000, and Sewer System Rehabilitation Plan Phase 2, SSRPP-2, Sewer Main Replacement Project Number 13147 and 48, CP Number 1363,000. And Mr. Murray is here to provide the report.
Actually, Sam Kim will be taking this report.
Thank you.
Mister President and members of the sanitary district board, tonight, the board is being asked to award a contract to JIG Consultants for Professional Engineering Services, including civil engineering design and topographic survey for the Acacia and Taft Sewer Replacement Project, and the Sewer System Rehabilitation Plan Phase 2 Sewer Main Replacement Projects Number 13147 and 48. These projects were identified as a priority projects in the Sewer System Rehabilitation Plan and the System Evaluation and Capacity Assurance Plan. Scope of services includes designing of a sewer main replacement, new sewer mains, new manholes, restoring existing sewer laterals, repair of intruding laterals, and manhole channels, and other necessary improvements. Consultant will generate the plans and contract documents to construct the proposed projects shown on the attached location map. The overall length of the project is approximately 800 linear feet of petrified clay pipe sewer mains. Staff sent out three requests for proposal and received three responses. Staff reviewed and rated the proposals, and determined JIG, JIG Consultants is the most qualified proposer and would provide the most qualified service to the district. The negotiated professional services agreement is for just under $500,000. There is no impact to the general fund. This project is included in the 2023-2024 Capital Improvement Budget, and will be financed with the sewer funds. Should the board decide to award the contract today, staff can begin the design by September of this year. This concludes the staff report. Staff is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Joe, go ahead.
Sam?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for taking me on tour, and I understand the challenges we have with our sewer system. I just have a few questions. Mostly the same that I always ask with, of contractors who are getting rewarded these proposals. Have they been properly vetted and competitively bid?
Yes, yes. This is actually the professional services consultant, we have used them in the past, and have a good history with us.
Okay, so they're the most reasonable bid competitively, and this is the, the vote that will award them the contract, correct?
Omar, you wanna take the professional services, or, I guess I could, as you, I'll let you do it.
For professional services, you have to award first on qualifications, and then you negotiate price, so price cannot be the number one qualification, it has to be qualifications of the consultant to do the work that is required.
Yeah, I'm confident that they've been vetted, and that you've used them before, so we have a good track record with them.
Yes, sir.
Because it says here it's phase two, so I don't know, will there be more phases?
The phase two will be the last phase on that structural deficiency areas.
Okay, and if we vote on it today, how soon will all of these be performed on?
The design will start September of this year, and we'll take about six to, six months to about eight months to finish the design on whole thing. But we'll start with the, start by phases, so first phase will be done in three to five months.
And last question, where will the funds be coming from for this amount?
It will be coming from our sewer funds.
Thank you. It won't impact this general fund at all?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Josh.
So, we've been getting a lot of water lately, and, and we have a current sewer project going in on Lamson, it's going months over, because of all the de-watering efforts that are having to be made now. We had a wet year this year, and it looks like next year, we're, they're saying this El Nino is gonna probably, so are we looking at the added timeframes that it's gonna take, because I'm sure they're gonna have the same problems here with de-watering that we're having on the Lamson Sewer Project right now?
We hope not. Actually, historically, as we get close to the west side of the Garden Grove, the groundwater is shallow, but where we're proposing to do sewer projects with this project, historically, they're not that shallow, so hopefully, we're, hopefully, we don't hit the groundwater on this one.
Okay. Yeah, just try to keep that in mind, I know it becomes a, a big inconvenience for the public when their roads are tore up for, you know, and most folks don't even realize it's sewer, they figure it's just asphalt work being done, and they can't understand why it's taken so long, you know, so.
Okay, sir.
Good thing to keep that in mind.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, or a motion?
Please call for the vote.
I stole your item. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay, I think that, that called teamwork, that's fine, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, so you have clerkly call for the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you, so is there any matter? If not, the sanitary district meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, September 26, 2023. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So that adjourns sanitary, and we'll open successor agency. Madam Court, would you please call roll for successor?
Member Brightigam.
Here.
Member Tran.
Here.
Member Doven.
Present.
Member Clumpenstein.
Here.
Member Nguyen.
Here.
And Chair Jones.
Here.
And Vice Chair O'Neill is absent.
All righty, we already did oral communications, consent items just received on file of the minutes, can I get a motion in a second?
Would you like to call the vote since?
Bottom court, yes.
I'm waiting on one vote.
Member Brightigum?
Up here, but John's, it's locked up.
Um, let's see here. It's saying that you haven't voted, Brightigum. It's received. Let me redo this real quick. Let's see. It'll go through. Okay, there it is. Motion received. Six yes votes.
Alright, thank you. Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn and reconvene city council. That takes us on to consent items. We already did 4B, but otherwise recommended that the balance be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Call the vote.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
Alright, items for consideration 5A.
Item 5A is authorize issuance of a purchase order to PB Loader Corporation for one new truck-mounted bulk waste loader. And Mr. Murray will provide the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, city council is being asked to purchase one new truck-mounted waste loader for the Trees and Flood Control Maintenance Section of the Public Works Department, and that'll be from PB Loader Corporation through the Sourcewell Competitive Bid Process. This new piece of equipment will increase the productivity of our tree section. The loader will be mounted to a dump truck. The price of this truck includes the dump trucks, and that's like about $160,000 all by itself. And it will be used to pick up large piles of tree limbs, branches, and clippings, and it will do it with a mechanical arm. That work currently has been, it's done by hand. So they just go and they just, and you can, so it's a lot more efficient. That's why we're getting it. So based on the results of the Sourcewell Competitive Bid Program, the PB Loader Corporation is the lowest responsible bid with a cost of almost $370,000 for the truck-mounted bulk waste loader. And that, again, includes $160,000 just for the truck itself. There is no impact to the general fund, and the purchase was improved in the budget. Should council decide to authorize a purchase tonight, we expect the delivery of the loader by next summer. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thanks, Bill. Joe?
Just a quick one. Will it be insured for how long, and how long do you anticipate it being put into circulation and operation?
These vehicles, I don't know how long we're gonna go with this particular one, but in general, that's 10 to 15 years.
Okay, and the last one that we have, are we going to salvage it or recover something for it?
This is actually a brand-new piece of equipment. We've never had this before. Like I said, we did this work by hand before, so we're actually getting a new mechanical piece of equipment to automate the process of picking up the tree limbs so that we can do our work faster.
So we might even save money on labor and otherwise be more efficient in being able to meet the needs of these tree pickups that we haven't had this equipment before, correct?
Correct. We'll be able to increase our schedule of tree trimming, yes.
Thank you. Any others?
Move to approve?
I'll second.
Call the vote. Thanks, Bill.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
Alright, item 5B.
Item 5B is a ward of contract to California Landscape and Design, Inc. for city project number S-1311 Magnolia Park Improvement. And Mr. Montanes is gonna provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Community Services is here to request that the city council award a contract to California Landscape Design, Inc. for Magnolia Park Improvements. The Magnolia Park Improvement Project is part of the capital improvement priorities outlined in the 2019 Parks and Facilities Master Plan. Staff solicited bids for this project. Seven bids were received and opened by the city clerk's office on June 19, 2023, at 11:00 a.m. On June 27, 2023, the city council approved the award of contract for John Gilmore Construction. Following this approval, John Gilmore Construction failed to meet contract requirements within the deadlines and multiple extensions provided to the company. In particular, John Gilmore Construction failed to provide the performance and labor and material bonds required by the contract documents and state law. Due to this failure, the city provided John Gilmore Construction with a notice of cancellation of award of contract and termination of contract on August 3, 2023. As a result of the cancellation of the contract with the lowest bidder, John Gilmore Construction, staff reviewed the remaining six bids that were received for this project. The following is the order of bids, starting with the second lowest bidder. $721,175 California Landscape and Design, Inc. $809,582 Rome Profile Construction, Incorporated. $904,628 MBC Enterprise, Inc. $980,570 Environmental Construction, Inc. $999,742 MLC Construction, Inc. And $1,114,257 PUB Construction, Inc. Staff is recommending that the city council award the contract to the second lowest responsible bidder, California Landscape Design, Inc. The original amount from California Landscape and Design, Inc. was $721,175. However, in an effort to reduce project costs, staff solicited California Landscape and Design, Inc. to provide the city with its best and final bid. Acting in good faith, California Landscape and Design, Inc. was able to lower their bid to $703,780. The license and references for this contractor have been reviewed and verified by staff, and all other documentation is in order. Additionally, the city has previously worked with this contractor as they were the primary contractor on the Atlantis Play Center perimeter fence upgrade. They completed the project in good standings with the city. If this contract is awarded today, construction completion is estimated for December 2023. There's no impact to the general fund. The total contract will be funded by Prop 68 per capita grant and citywide park fee funds. It is recommended that the city council confirm the cancellation of the contract with John Gilmore Construction for the failure to provide the required bonds and award the contract to California Landscape and Design, Inc. for Magnolia Park Improvements in the amount of $703,780. And authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with California Landscape Design, Inc. on behalf of the city and make minor modifications as appropriate. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Joe?
A quick question and one that also probably a quick answer. One is the performance timeline, you're saying by the end of this year, December 2023, that the funds will be expended by the end of the year to meet our purposes, right?
For the most part, yeah. I mean, unless there's some additional parts to the project that need to be change orders and so on and so forth, yeah. But for the most part, most of the funds will be expended by the end of the year.
Okay. Now, the previous bidder, which failed to come through with their bonds, are those bonds include a performance bond?
Yes, yes, correct.
And that would have been in the amount $703,000, something like that, that has to be covered?
It would have been in the amount of their bid. I think it was $600,000 and change.
And we are awarding this to California Landscape and Design, and they have provided a performance bond for their bid, correct?
They will be providing. Normally, we collect those at the time of signing of the contract. The bonds cost money, and so we don't require them to purchase the bonds until the city council approves a contract.
That makes sense. So thank you for your hard work in providing a backup contractor, and also we got a pretty low bid, I think. This is not the lowest necessarily, but it is a good, solid bid, reasonable, and we have a performance bond issue covered from the contract itself, so no extra charge, correct?
Correct. The bid amount includes the bonds, and is a performance bond and a labor-material bond. So two separate bonds.
Joe, would you care to make a motion?
I'd motion to vote on this agreement.
I'll second it. Just a quick comment. No pickleball courts.
Yeah, no, this is, again, part of the original project. We're working on that.
I thought I'd put that out there for Maureen out there.
Alright, we have a motion in a second. Call the vote.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
Alright, that takes us on to matters, and we do have one item listed. Item 6A, which is an update on the status of the city's housing element as requested by City Manager Lisa Kim.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The planning staff has done a fantastic job working with State Department of Housing and Community Development towards a certified sixth-cycle housing element, and we have Chris Chung, Senior Planner, here tonight to provide you with an update.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Jones and members of the city council. City staff, along with the city's consultant, MIG, would like to thank everyone for attending tonight's status update on the housing element. And as a reminder, tonight's presentation is available on the city's housing element website at ggcity.org/housing-element. For tonight's agenda, we will start off with an overview of the housing element and RENA since it's been some time since this body last discussed the housing element. So we thought a refresher on the topic would be helpful. And staff will also provide an overview of the extensive community engagement efforts that the city has undertaken related to the housing element update. An overall timeline will provide a good picture of where we started and where we are today in regards to the HCD's review of the city's housing element. And the city's consultant, MIG, will then provide a rundown of the proposed revisions to the city's housing element. And finally, staff will provide an update on the current status of the housing element and next steps. The housing element is a state-required chapter of the city's general plan, and it identifies programs and policies to further the goal of meeting the housing needs of existing and future residents for the production of safe, decent, and affordable housing for all persons in the community. This plan is required by state housing law and must be updated every eight years. Furthermore, the housing element must be certified by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as HCD. And the state has previously announced a statewide housing emergency and has directed all local jurisdictions to facilitate the development of housing for all economic segments of the community. There are generally four components of the housing element which cover various topics such as governmental and non-governmental constraints to housing development, identifying adequate sites to ensure that the city has sufficient land to accommodate its share of regional housing needs. It includes a variety of programs that generally aim to facilitate housing production, address housing issues, and ensure the city meets requirements of state housing laws. And the housing element also tracks the progress of housing production as well as the progress of existing housing element programs and their continued appropriateness. Programs of the housing element touch on a variety of housing issues and establishes objectives, timelines, and meaningful actions that the city will take to address issues such as affordable housing construction, ADUs, objective standards, affirmatively furthering fair housing, or also known as AFFH, and homeless housing needs. RENA, which stands for Regional Housing Needs Assessment, is mandated by state housing law as part of the periodic process of updating local housing elements. RENA quantifies the housing need for all income levels within each jurisdiction. And the city is currently in the 2021-2029 planning period, also known as the sixth-cycle RENA. HCD determines the RENA for each region of California, and the RENA for the Southern California region is 1.3 million housing units. The Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG, then establishes a methodology that quantifies the RENA for each jurisdiction. And Garden Grove's RENA allocation, as you may be aware, for the current planning period is 19,168 housing units. Among all cities in this entire SCAG region, only four cities have higher arenas than Garden Grove, those being Los Angeles, Long Beach, Ontario, and Irvine. In the previous fifth RENA cycle, the city's RENA was 747 housing units, and in comparison to the current sixth RENA cycle, this is a 2,466% increase, which then leads to the question, then how did Garden Grove end up with the RENA of 19,168 housing units? This slide shows the methodology that was used to determine the RENA for the previous fifth RENA cycle, which was based entirely on what is called projected need. In other words, based on trends of household and job growth, the percentage of vacant units in the city, and replacing previously demolished housing units, Garden Grove's RENA resulted in 747 housing units. And for the fifth RENA cycle, the city constructed a little over 1,200 housing units. In the sixth cycle of RENA cycle, the state introduced a new component to the methodology called existing need. The concept of existing need is based on the state's assertion that many cities across California have failed to meet the arenas and produce enough housing to meet the needs of their community and for the region as a whole. So although Garden Grove had far exceeded its own RENA goal of 747 units by producing over 1,200 units, the state is requiring all jurisdictions to collectively, quote, "carry the load" and accommodate the shortfalls of all other cities across the state. This new component called existing need is comprised of three separate factors. The two main drivers of existing need are based on the proximity of a city's population to high-quality public transit and jobs. I'd like to note that the state's intent of this methodology is in part to promote more efficient development patterns that encourage public transit use, and the idea is to build housing close to jobs, theoretically reducing work commute times and reducing greenhouse gas emissions, which is a primary goal of the state air resources board. Garden Grove happens to be in the 96th percentile for public transit access and in the 98th percentile for jobs access. The third factor at the bottom right is called residual need, and there are cities that are considered disadvantaged communities, or DACs. These are cities that have 50% or more of its population in, quote, "low-resource areas." When a city is considered a DAC, the existing need number at the top right is subtracted from their total RENA. Therefore, the RENA would only be based on the projected number, projected need number on the left. 48% of Garden Grove's population is considered in a low-resource area. However, because we did not meet the 50% threshold, Garden Grove is not considered a DAC, and therefore, our RENA includes both projected and existing need. This slide shows how Garden Grove's RENA is broken down by income category to ensure we accommodate the housing needs for households of all income levels. And it is important to note that the RENA is not a construction obligation. Rather, it is a goal for accommodating housing need, ensuring the city has appropriate land use and zoning policies in place that facilitate the production of housing. This chart demonstrates how the city intends to meet its RENA, which in part is accommodated by ADUs and SB9 units. The remaining majority is expected to come from underutilized sites. An example of an underutilized site is a vacant site, or another example is a large site that is currently developed with a single-family home, but due to the large lot size and multifamily zoning, the site could feasibly be redeveloped with a larger number of units. Throughout the process, leading up to SCAG's adoption of the RENA methodology and the final RENA allocation, Garden Grove submitted multiple letters to SCAG and HCD voicing concerns with the inequitable RENA and methodology being considered. In 2021, Garden Grove submitted two appeals to SCAG, and among the 52 appeals submitted to SCAG by other cities, only two appeals were granted. Fifty appeals were denied, including Garden Grove's. The following slides will briefly highlight community engagement efforts conducted by the city throughout the process. In August of 2020, the city launched a comprehensive public outreach and community engagement plan to educate and inform the public on matters related to the housing element and RENA. The city identified key audiences and engagement methods to encourage participation from the broad cross-section of the Garden Grove community, representative of the city- the broad cross-section of the Garden Grove community, representative of the city's diverse cultural groups, income levels, ages, and interests, with a particular focus on reaching out to disadvantaged community areas of the city. The city used a wide variety of public engagement tools and methods, which included city council and stakeholder interviews, forums and workshops, surveys, study sessions. We also created a housing element webpage, social media and press releases, and much more. And the following slides highlight some of the outreach tools that were used, such as community mural boards that were posted online, surveys, a dedicated housing element website, fact sheets in various languages, and we also created a housing element 101 video, which was produced by our very own HGTV3 team. And I would highly encourage everyone to watch the animated video, as it does, as it does an incredible job of explaining the housing element arena in an easy-to-understand Over the past couple of years, the city officially submitted its housing element to HCD for review, and the city has been committed to working with HCD to ensure that this housing element receives certification. Throughout the process, staff has worked very closely with HCD staff to ensure remaining comments are addressed in full. And I'm happy to report that just last week, on August 14th, the city received a formal response letter from HCD reporting the results of its review of the city's latest housing element submission, and HCD found Garden Grove's housing element to, quote, "substantially comply with state housing element law," and that it, quote, "meets statutory requirements." For the following slides, I will now hand the presentation over to Jose Rodriguez with MIG, who's the city's consultant assisting with the preparation of the housing element.
Thank you, Chris. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm going to go over the changes to the housing element since it was last adopted, and that was at the end of 2021. So I'm going to provide a little bit of detail on the specific changes that we make, and these changes will, you'll get to see those, and those will come before you when the document goes before you for adoption. The slide here shows the table of contents for the housing element, and you can see in the red box, those are the changes that, the sections that we've made changes to. Some sections were heavily changed, other sections were kind of light on, in terms of the changes. The community profile, for example, we just updated the housing homeless data, and at the time, 22 data became available, so we decided to go ahead and update the data for the housing element. Under the constraint section to the housing element, as you recall, the housing element was adopted in 2021, but this, even though when the city was pursuing certification, the city continued to update the zoning code, zoning code amendments, to make sure it was meeting housing changes that were identified in the housing element, but ensuring that the zoning code was meeting state law requirements. And back then, there was SB9 requirements that were updated and other changes to the zoning code that were needed to accommodate housing. And the constraint section, we made sure we included those changes in the housing element. One of the biggest areas we made significant changes, and this was for state law requirements, is the area of the AFFH, the affirmatively furthering fair housing. And this is an area that the state really honed in on Garden Grove's housing element. We added a significant amount of data, maps, to address this particular section, one showing regional trends, national trends, how are the outreach approach met the AFFH requirements. We looked at historical segregation in Orange County and looked at what the, both Orange County was doing to address housing discrimination, both in the county as well as in Garden Grove. Still in the AFFH section, we did a significant amount of analysis on what's called the opportunity access areas. And this is a state requirement, looking at where are the highest resources in the city, through education, through the economics, through areas that focus on environmental justice and transportation. There are bonuses, I guess, for fair housing developers. If they can put housing in certain resource areas, they can get more funding. But the AFFH section really looks at how different areas in Garden Grove vary, and how the sites that we looked at for the housing element are distributed throughout the city and how they overlap with the access areas. Additionally, we did additional analysis on cost burden and overpayment. We looked at overcrowding and substantial, substandard housing, again, looked at the homeless, homeless data, and then displacement risk. And again, all of it was focused on the AFFH analysis, where the different race and ethnicity populations are concentrated, where low income and areas of high poverty, substandard housing, was all overlaid and overlapped, and additional analysis was done. And then we identified some of the key issues in terms of AFFH and housing, disproportionate housing needs related to overcrowding, substandard housing, and then displacement risk. And the displacement is when you have regional trends, you have high housing costs, you have limited supply of housing, and then those become issues for people to lose housing and at risk for homeless or moving elsewhere just because they can't afford to live in Garden Grove. So significant analysis on displacement risk was applied and conducted. Under the housing resources, this is another section where significant work was done, and this is the area where we show the state how the city accommodates that 19,000 housing units. So we did an additional analysis to show that the city does have capacity. We looked at regional trends, we looked at building, housing that was built in Santa Ana and Anaheim, and showed the existing trends of what those existing properties were before they were converted to housing, and show that Garden Grove also has similar properties of those nature, and show that there are similar trends in Garden Grove that can accommodate the housing. One of the areas, it's shown here in yellow, is the third round of HCD review, and they really looked at sites where we identified housing sites that are designated for industrial properties. However, in the general plan, we do have housing overlays over industrial properties, but the state was concerned, what are the, what are the issues that could happen if you have housing-sited industrial sites? So city staff conducted significant analysis to show that putting housing sites over properties that are designated industrial is not an impediment to building those housings. So there was significant analysis showed in surrounding areas that do have industrial sites and show that they were developed to other types of property. City staff did extensive conversations with property developers and housing developers to show that, at least within this particular area, there's no constraints within those industrial sites. And it was enough for HCD to be satisfied that there's no constraints on identifying sites on industrial properties. Additionally, there's a greater burden from the state requiring cities that are, that have so many low-income sites. I think there's almost 6,000 low-income housing units within the Garden Grove arena. They wanted to make sure that those sites are available over the next eight years. So from 2021, at the time we did this, to 2029, the eight-year cycle. And so we had to identify criteria to show that those properties could turn over to housing. And some of the criteria we looked at, one is we sent a letter and asked property owners to complete a form to show that, hey, some of these properties leases were expiring, there was property owner interest in developing sites to housing. But we also did additional analysis, made sure we looked at the building condition. We weren't, we weren't including any buildings that were recently rehabbed. It was, we looked at buildings that were older, we looked at the year, property sizes, if it's a small building and a larger lot, like Chris mentioned earlier, those are sites we made sure we selected. But every single site has a criteria number. We showed property owner interest, existing land use could be developed, we showed all the different criteria. So that was a request by the state. Additionally, the AFFH analysis had to be reviewed against all the sites inventory, as I mentioned, the high resource areas and the low resource areas, how the sites are distributed to those areas, and so that was important. Addressing the housing plan, new policies to address the AFFH analysis, the industrial property sites, we updated all the programs to address those, the new zoning that was implemented, that's all been updated, as well as specific action items for the AFFH analysis. The state really looked at, not only just Garden Grove, but many, many cities, on what meaningful actions is the city taking to address AFFH? And so those, those are the action items we put in the implementation plan. And then the last section that we updated was the previous housing element, the one that was adopted 2014 to 2021. The state made sure that the city, the state wanted to ensure that the city was accomplishing certain programs to meet special needs population. So that was updated as well. And so those are all the major changes that we did to the housing element. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Chris for the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Jose. I'd like to now provide an update on this current status of the housing element. As mentioned prior, the city's third submission was, of the housing element was sent to HCD on June 20th, and as mentioned prior, the city received a letter of substantial compliance from HCD on her latest submittal of the housing element. And finally, on to next steps. Following tonight's status update, the city staff anticipates beginning the public hearing process in September of 2023 to bring forward the proposed revisions to the adopted housing element for consideration by the Planning Commission and then city council following. Following city council approval, the city would then effectively obtain HCD's final certification of the housing element. And this concludes our presentation. City staff, along with the consultant, MIG staff, are available for any questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, MIG. Any questions, comments, folks?
I have a couple of questions. I have two different questions. So the first one is, we have to get to 19,168. So where are we at right now? Like, what percentage, how many ADU do you have, that's that?
I don't have the current stats before me at the moment, but we're making good progress. Definitely ADU production is off the charts every single year in the 300-unit range. Not, that doesn't include other types of units, like single-family, multifamily, but just ADUs alone. But it's going to be a little bit challenging to get to the 19,000 number, but again, that's not a construction obligation, it's just ensuring that we have the zoning and policies in place that facilitate housing production.
The other question is, in the report, it mentioned about, we have to provide exact location where new housing can feasible be added, the site inventory, do we have that?
Yes, correct. In the housing element, there's an exhibit called the Sites Inventory, and it shows specific properties where the city staff, along with the consultant, had, you know, we would run a fine-tooth comb through the whole city to find out where are, you know, feasible sites that show good feasibility for turning over to increased housing or redeveloping, redeveloping to housing. So that, that's in the housing element.
Okay, so is this one public, or is that something that I could request and take a look later?
Oh, yes, it's on the housing element webpage right now. So you can go in there, and if you go to, I think it's page 220, I don't know why I know that, but, but it's exhibit H19, Sites Inventory.
Okay, well, I just want to say thank you so much for the detail, you know, like, what you have to do to go to the survey, and so by listening to it, I know that you actually took the effort and checked every single little thing, so thank you for that report.
Yeah, I just want to give you guys a congratulations and kudos for a job well done. Seriously, this has been a long, drawn-out process, and I know you guys have been buried to hear with this. It's gone back and forth and all kinds of, you know, we've all been involved in different applications here, and to get to the point where you got that letter of substantial compliance from the state, that's worth noting. I mean, that, that's, you've really come a long way. I'm sure we're going to have a lot of questions as we digest the new stuff and kind of go through all this stuff, but I'm sure your phone will probably, most of us will be calling you with questions and whatnot, but with that being said, I just want to say thank you for all the work you put into it and all the staff put into this to get us this far.
I do have a long list of things, but I'll try to keep it brief, and I know Chris, who's been on board with us for quite a while now, and your experience has really helped us pull through on this one. But it's very complicated as you've worked through it, and you know that getting to that letter is not the only thing we have to do. It seems like our city is being made to jump through a lot of hoops. So I have to push back here, I'm not as much speaking to the staff or our residents, but I'm pushing back against SCAG itself and the state requirements. It seems to me, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we are a victim of our own success. The more we meet their requirements or their, they set certain quotas, the more we're tasked with trying to meet their demands. And where's the reward? So what comes with a letter? Once we get that approved, what do we get? Where's the funding? So it seems like putting a lot on a city, in this case, I have to look out for the interest of our residents in our city, and I don't see any awards. I don't see any rewards for jumping through all these hoops, meeting all of this, and I want to see the appeal letters. I want it on our apps, I want it on our website, so residents know what is it that we're pushing back against SCAG and other authorities, AFFH, or all of this other alphabet soup, and I don't know the half of it. But I, I'm curious, why are we pushing back and what do we appeal? I want to see those appeal letters. And so they send a letter and say, yeah, here, kudos, you got, you know, you jumped through all these hoops. I don't see any rewards at the end of it. By the end of the year, when we get everything lined up, where's the rewards? Or are we going to be tasked with more things to do? And that just makes things more complicated for you, and I can't even digest a half of this on this dice, okay? But I don't like the way it's headed. 19,000 plus units? And then what's all this new zoning? Do anybody here understand what the new zoning is? We have always been opposed to, as I know, spot zoning. We don't just give people, you know, a zone change. But how are you going to build all these affordable housings? And you've got maps, and you're going to page 220, and you're talking about H19. I haven't read it. Now, if I was a property owner, and I'm trying to put in for, to develop my property for affordable housing, are we going to get some technical assistance from the city? Do we have time and resources to provide that? And will they get the zone change or whatever new zoning applied to the requirement so they get to develop? And then where's the funding coming from? So I need to know, how are we going to get these fair housing developers to come invest in our city? Are they breaking down our doors? Are we proactively seeking out these fair housing developers? Where are they? Are we lining them up? I've heard some people want to subdivide their property and do fair housing and housing, you know, all these affordable housing projects. I haven't seen them. And it ain't the ADUs that's going to meet the requirements. Even if you say you build out three, four, five, 1,000, two, 3,000 a year, it is not going to meet the 19,000-something requirement. Now, we're going to work really hard to do that. The state and SCAG is going to say, good job, now you're tasked with meeting more units, because other cities are not meeting their requirements. And that doesn't sound right to me, so I am pushing back, and I'm calling for all of this material to be put on our website and online. I know a lot of it is already online, on the apps, but I want our residents, and I'm sure we have a lot smarter residents than me, they'll figure it out. So I want to know, how are we going to support the fair housing developer if they want to come and help us in the city and meet those quotas? Are we proactively seeking them out? So that's what, food for thought tonight, Chris. I don't want to give you more work to do, or Jose here, who's given us a great presentation, but at the end of the day, are we going to meet these quotas, or are we just going to kick the ball down the road? One, two, three years later, we're still looking at this, and this problem is going to get bigger from what I'm looking at tonight. It's not getting smaller, it's not going away. And it seems like all of these requirements, we're going to be victims of our own success, and I don't like that. So that's, I'm pushing back on that, not against the staff, but that's, that's a mouthful, I've already said enough. Thank you.
Maybe I should have gone first, Joe. Only because I would just say that I highly recommend that staff sit with our two new council members and really walk them through this process, because the rest of us had had the opportunity the opportunity to go through multiple conversations and study sessions. I will be making sure that all of my typos were also incorporated in the red line version. But to your point, Joe, we did argue this heavily. We appealed on the very reasons that you're stating frustration for. You know, we missed that DAC appropriation that other cities got by, what was it, like 3,000 individuals? But you have to keep in mind that this is also as a result of, you know, there was a time a few years ago where people were supposed to fill out the census, and there was a lot of fear around filling out that census. And so while we did have a small increase in population, we did not have the numbers that I believe, and I know the chief of police, and I'm sure a fire too would agree, that we actually have in this city. And so we don't have to go into semantics about like why that was the case, but we should have had higher numbers that would have given us that exemption that other cities have. The reason why the other two, only two of those appeals, because I sat through them, and I was the representative on SCAG for Garden Grove and La Palma and Cypress, is that because they were in flooding and fire zones, and they were unable to build on the prop, in the areas in which they were being asked to increase their population, so their appeals were heard and not ours. So it's been a very frustrating thing. I think Stephanie saw me have a visceral reaction and kind of like mark something when we were coming to DAC. But it's something that we have to look at, and that was leading me to my comment. I'd like for, I know September is going to be a very busy month. I know some of our delegation will be going abroad, but I know that also the state will be going into recess shortly, I think after next week. If we can look at when they go back into session and figure out if we can meet with them before then, or if not when the next recess will be, I'd really like to be part of a meeting with Senator Umberg and key individuals from our staff. One, to give them this update, let them know where we're at, but also kind of walk them through why we appealed, because I don't know that he or his office fully understands the intricacies of that. And I think when we appealed, part of that problem is you have 52 cities crying rivers about them not wanting to build more, where we had a legitimate reason as far as we were so close to being a DAC. Because we're sandwiched between large cities like Anaheim and Santa Ana, who had a significant decrease in their numbers, those had to be absorbed somewhere else in the region. And so those of us that did not meet the DAC had to absorb those numbers, which is why ours is so significant. And I think there's just a lack of understanding around that. I think we advocated for a siding scale. I mean, we really, staff got really creative about how they were trying to make this appeal happen, and it's so unfortunate that it didn't. And so I think we just need to circumvent that and move forward by urging our legislators to push for legislation that changes how this is being looked at and considered, showing them that we are doing the work. Because per my recollection, did the city of Garden Grove meet its RENA allocation in the fifth cycle? We did? Did we exceed it?
For total number of housing units, yes.
Okay. And I think there's that misconception that only Santa Ana and Anaheim are meeting their RENA numbers or whatever, and I'm just like, yeah, when you have 2,000 or 3,000 units and you're building 10 every other year or whatever, like, of course we're exceeding your numbers. So there's different components, and I think we need to be better advocates of the work that we're doing and expressing that to whoever needs to hear it, including our residents. So that's definitely something that's a work in progress for our city that we need to do a better job of doing. Remember, I'm always an advocate of more information is better, whether it's good or bad, we have to show everyone everything. It's not just presenting this pretty picture, but we have to also show the bad, so that folks are not frustrated and taken by surprise when things like this happen. But with that being said, please look into scheduling a meeting with the senator and his staff, making sure that we have our best foot forward with this HCD letter and giving them the highlights, explaining to them why we appealed, but also thinking ahead. You know, they're going to be approving budgets sooner or later in the next cycle, and we want to make sure that they know we are working hard, we've jumped through all the hoops, and we're ready to partner with them to hopefully get, draw down more dollars to help in our efforts to meet this cycle. So I look forward to hopefully scheduling that sometime soon. Thank you.
George?
Yeah, just one more quick follow-up. And forgive me, Chris, but I was under the impression that the ADUs did not count towards the RENA numbers. Is that changed, or is that?
ADUs, even JDU's, they all count as one unit towards the RENA.
They do, okay.
So it draws down the RENA for the city, correct?
Okay. And, you know, Councilmember Dovin had, what's the reward? When, and we were screaming the same thing. Every time we're successful, our staff is successful, we get penalized more. And basically, we don't get fined, because when we don't meet these, we get fined, and then we subject the taxpayers to more fines and levies and assessments and all these things that we don't want to happen. So that's unfortunately, the state is mandating these. None of us wanted it. We were all screaming. Unfortunately, this is something the state is like, you're going to do it. And so that's why I was congratulating staff to actually get that letter. I think there's only a handful of cities that have that letter, right? That, especially with the numbers that we had compared to what other cities had, they had to be so creative, thinking out of the box, you know, where do we do this? Where do the, you know, so that's what I was giving them kudos for, not the fact that we're going down this road. But anyway, thank you.
All right. Chris, Maria, Nikki, scary testament to your hard work and dedication that you have this document memorized by page number, but thanks for all that you have put into this, and thank you for the updates. Thanks. All right, we'll go on to matters from council members. George?
Actually, nothing for me this week.
Cindy?
Oh, I don't talk about the things that we did last week.
So just a couple of things. Earlier, we were sort of tool how people could report issue and things like that earlier. And so just want to mention, I know in the past that, as, I guess as a new council member, people came to me and asked me about the pothole and the light bulb and this and that. So from today, so hopefully our resident will use the tool so that way they would be able to report the issue rather than me asking the city manager to, you know, tap our staff on that. But kind of lead to the next one, because District Two and District Three, right next to each other, so sometimes people have issue and they, they just send to, you know, to the wrong council member. But I guess I speak for council member John O'Newt. There was some issue related to the park, the Magnolia Park, that people cannot use the restroom. And it kind of remind me of, I had an issue when I went to the Garden Grove Park too. I did talk to our staff, and they gave us the reason why that happened, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, there will be more detail about what do we do about that so that way we do have a park where people cannot go there, you know, walking and use the restroom just because it's always locked. And so hopefully more detail will come out soon. And there were issue with the homeless encampment. When people bring up the issue to the council, properly to other council members too, I do want to let the resident know that not just taking the request and pass to the staff and not doing the, to find the outcome. So what I did, I asked, I checked the staff and to see what the end of it, whether, you know, we took some action, or in this case, it actually is, it belonged to Caltrans because of the freeway. So I just want to say thank to Brandon who brought it up, and so our staff already notified to Caltrans, and hopefully they will take some action from there. Next one is about, just want to say congratulations to the two girl go award, Girl Scout Go Award, and for Eagle Court Meadow, Council, George Pigum and I went to that event, and it's just amazing to see, hear the story or their bio, the student bio, like what they did to earn that, and just throw that away, they're amazing successful, what they have done. Just young, 18, 19 years old, right, student? Oh, 17, yeah. And next one, just want to say thank to council members Stephanie Copinson for coming to the, giving the pack back, and you could talk more about that later. Yeah, so I will pass it to you, and you could speak about that. But thanks to you for coming to the Boys and Girls Scout, and we donate more than 100 pack back there. Last but not least, our resident had been asking me about issue about they have with their landlord or eviction and different thing, that's one, and then there were other thing about civil issue. And then in Santa Ana, they had a free legal event. I went there, that was from the other council member in Santa Ana. When I went there, actually, Garden Grove resident was there, and I was there, just kind of helping them fill out the paper and get some advice from the lawyer. So because of that, people were asking, and recent, the last couple of weeks, more people asking, I don't, I don't, I'm not expert on that. So what we're going to do, we're going to try to do a free legal service event in Garden Grove City. So I talked to the staff, and I just opened this to all the council member here, if you would like to kind of partner with me and then do something like that so that we could provide similar event for our resident. And I talked to the staff, we're picking a date now, so hopefully we'll have that happen soon. And this invite to all Garden Grove resident. That's it for me, sir.
Thank you. Joe?
Mayor and council members, I'm, I'm, thank you, Mayor Proten Bragim, and as well as Kim Nguyen, and I'm sure Stephanie had more to add on the housing element issue. And my reaction was very visceral, as you see, and I understand your hard work and where you're going with that, and hopefully I can get behind all of you and try to do something about it, because it seems very unfair. I didn't get a lot of chance to review all of it, and like you say, there's a lot of steps that led up to what it is today, but, so we have some things to celebrate, but we also have some things to really worry about. So that was just my, my reaction to the housing element reporting tonight. Hopefully, we'll get more reports towards the later parts of the year and next year, and we'll be able to address these issues better. But I have a feeling that it'll keep coming back on the agenda. It's not going away anytime soon.
If it doesn't make you mad, you're not human.
Yeah, so I won't speak more to that. I do want to speak to some other things, and that is, I know that we've, we're on a roll with hiring new directors, and thank you, city manager, you provided the leadership for that, and I want a proper reception for incoming director, like I did when Nikki came on board, and that was a very good reception. So I'd like a formal recognition for our new director, and also for anyone retiring, I'd like a retirement party. I don't know how we're going to pay for it, but it's around the corner, so I'm all for retirement parties, and I will miss any of our staff like we miss our former city manager, but he's left us in good hands with Lisa Kim, and I know Lisa is responsive to me asking for internal promotions. So we put it out there that we want to promote internally, but I'm afraid the timeframe, the window for putting in for those positions might be a little bit short, if it's like the 28th or something by the end of this month. So do consider giving it a longer window if we don't have any applicants, and if we do, please let us know. So if we need an interview or whatever, kind of a heads up would be good, so we know the incoming people and get a chance to meet them. So that's basically all I have tonight, and I've spoken a lot tonight, and I didn't expect to, I keep promising not to talk so much, so thank you.
Stephanie?
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Cindy Tran and I went to the Boys and Girls Club yesterday afternoon to deliver quite a plethora of backpacks to the young children, students that attend the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove. Obviously, we embrace them, and we work so closely with our Boys and Girls Club here in Garden Grove. They are a wonderful branch and provide so much to the youth of Garden Grove. So it was an honor, Cindy, that you included me in that. You had your children there, and it was wonderful to see the little smiling faces pick out the backpack, and they were some pretty cool backpacks, I will say. And just to see the smiles and the happy faces, it was, it was very meaningful. So thank you for including me in that. The other thing I wanted to mention was mosquito samples are now testing positive for West Nile virus. It's a complete 180 here. Most of the surrounding cities are also showing positive cases, so this is just your friendly reminder to be dumping and draining your standing water. Remember to check your screens. If there's any rips or tears in them, that's obviously going to let in mosquitoes, and they will live and breed inside your house just like they will outside. If you need more information, ocvector.org is a great resource. Also, make sure to wear a bug repellent of your choice, especially at dusk and dawn. Those seem to be the times we walk our pets, and so just remember to wear your bug repellent. I've also been sharing updates and information on my social media pages. And then on the city side of things, obviously Anna Polito and her team have been wonderful about sharing all of this information on the Garden Grove Facebook page and on our GG City website. We actually have a separate page dedicated to West Nile virus. I was wondering if we can add to that. At our last vector control meeting, we had some pretty deep and robust updates and conversation on typhus, and unfortunately, we're leading the way on typhus cases here in Garden Grove. Vector Control has done an incredible job. They now actually have created a PCR test specific to testing people for typhus. So we've come a long way with our testing and just research on this disease, and unfortunately, it's fairly prolific in, or perfect in Garden Grove. So what I was wondering is, on the West Nile page, if we could also kind of put slash typhus and continue to maybe move that information on typhus up a little bit on that page, and I have some new resources and information just from my last meeting that I can share to add to that page as well. Thank you.
What are the signs or symptoms of typhus?
Typhus is high fever. You'd almost kind of assume that it was a flu, but they can also become very delirious. And I know this firsthand, my mother unfortunately almost died of typhus, and so I saw that firsthand, and luckily, it was a, it was a pretty terrible situation for about a week, week and a half. And at the time, they didn't know what she had, and so they were doing everything from spinal taps to every test under the sun to try and figure out what, what she had. Come to find out, it was typhus, and it's flea-borne typhus. There's several different strains. The one we have here in Garden Grove is from fleas. And of course, we have raccoons and opossums and skunks all over Garden Grove, and then those jump to our household pets and bring them inside to us. So another obviously important recommendation is flea and tick medication for your pets. And so now with that PCR test, it's putting families just at peace of mind because they can actually solve and figure out what our loved ones have before it's potentially too late. So whether it's West Nile virus or typhus, these are very real diseases, and Vector Control is working very hard to mitigate the risk here locally. So if we could add that to our page, just to make sure that information is at the fingertips of our residents, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Kim?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick notes. One, city manager, if you could reach out to OCTA, we're having issues with the hub again. I'm noticing that there are an increase of transients entering behind their bridge, whatever it's called, so I would like to get that addressed. We've had issues with them before with graffiti and trash and homeless, so make sure that they're on top of that. The other thing is, still having significant issues with Caltrans areas. We did a massive cleanup, I believe, earlier this year or last year on Trask and New Hope, but that problem has come back again. I have businesses there, residents there are complaining again, it's getting pretty prolific again, so we need to take that care of that. I know that we were awarded a grant, and that's coming, that's great, but in interim, there's still a lot of hazardous concerns there. And again, for the millionth time, the other issue is also the pedestrian bridge over the 22. I don't even know what Palm, Palm and Clinton would be the two other sides of that bridge. I'm sure PD knows what I'm talking about, but there, the increasing of encampments there is also concerning. And going on seven years of hearing the same complaint about Roxy and Trask and speeding, if we could have that being looked at again, residents are asking for speed bumps, they're asking for longer stretches of red paint around curbs, they're unable to see as they're coming out of those cul-de-sacs, and it's becoming dangerous as there's kids walking. So if we could look at that one more time, I'd really appreciate it. That's it for me.
I apologize, there was one thing that popped in while everybody was talking. I've received a few complaints already from debris in the road from the, from the roadways and whatnot from the tropical storm. I just want to let everybody know that the city's at it, you know, the streets, today was the first full day of street sweepers actually going, and it takes a little bit of time to do a whole city the size of Garden Grove.
of time to do a whole city the size of Garden Grove, so please be patient. They're, they're out there, they're working, it's going to take a few days, you know, so if they haven't gotten down your street or whatever, it's coming, they'll be there. But I have gotten a few people, you know, called and say, oh, you know, all these needles are in my yard, or all these, and it's like, you know, in the street and whatnot, and so if there's a major obstruction, a branch or something like that, please reach out to Public Works and let them know. But if it's just the normal debris and stuff, just be patient is all we can ask. They will get to it. It is happening as we speak, at least it started today, the street sweeper, so that's it.
City Manager Lisa Kim.
Thank you, honorable mayor members of the council. Thank you for the collective feedback. I have a long list that I've added to my notes today, so thank you so much. And thank you, Councilmember Dovin. We do have a reception scheduled and planned for the September twelfth, right before the meeting, to welcome our new Economic Development Director Ursula Luna Reynosa. And certainly there'll be additional events that will be scheduled to celebrate some of our employees that will be retiring in the near future. And so I do want to, first and foremost, and thank our Public Works staff during the Hurricane Hillary over the weekend, they were on staff twenty-four seven to address any needs within the community, and we do have one of the best teams in the county. And I want to thank Public Works Director Bill Murray for his team. He kept me apprised of all incidents that happened over the weekend, and also provided supplies and sand delivery and replenishment to our three fire stations that provided sand and sandbags to our community and our residents, and also to our first responders that were just, it was a rainy, not too much wind, but they were on hand to address our resident needs, so I want to thank our first responders and Chief Al Farrow and his team, our public, our police department, and OCFA were all on hand, and collectively, and lastly, our emergency manager Linda Moran. My goodness, she kept sending me updates throughout the forty-eight hours we were on storm or hurricane watch, and certainly she has been very responsive in providing updates, and want to thank her for her diligence as well, so thank you.
General counsel, I know we do have several scheduled closed session items, so we'll be adjourning to closed session right after this. Anything else to report at this time?
No, mayor, we do, we do need to adjourn to closed session.
Okay. And before we do that, I want to, I know we will maybe come back in here to officially close later, but just wanted to close the official public meeting in honor of a couple of people. So Garden Grove has suffered the loss of two very special people. The tragic loss of Corporal Han Cho, a twenty-eight-year veteran with the Garden Grove Police Department, was felt by all who knew him. Our thoughts and prayers are with his family, his friends, and colleagues. We also lost our most recent Strawberry Ball King and Senior Volunteer Man of the Year in 2023, Mr. Howard Whitaker. Howard was resident of Garden Grove for seventy years, who raised eight children with his wife of fifty years in Garden Grove. An active member of the community up until his passing, he will be remembered for his dedication to his family and to this community. And with that, we will adjourn to closed session.